All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners and over to you, Chair Hinton.
Good morning, good afternoon. I did the same thing earlier. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the full session of the Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session for Tuesday, May 28. We'll pick up with our next item, the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation Northwest Act Committee, Community Representative Appointments. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Jessica Pell's LUT Policy Analyst.
And I'm Stacy Shetler, County Engineer.
And we can zip through this pretty quickly. This is Community Representative Appointments for the Northwest Act. Just a little background on the Northwest Act. It was established by the Oregon Transportation Commission to be an advisory committee. It includes the geographic area of Clatsop County, Tillamook County, and Columbia County, plus part of Western Washington County. So basically, our rural area, including the City of Banks. The bylaws allow for up to 29 members representing county, cities, ports, transit, state parks, ODOT, federally recognized tribes, and then two citizen-at-large positions per county. Members serve to your terms and can be reappointed. And I just want to note, we don't use the citizen-at-large terminology anymore at Washington County. So and throughout this presentation, we refer to those as community representatives. Our Washington County Northwest Act members include Commissioner Willie, who is appointed by the board. Stacy Shetler, our county engineer, is the alternate to Commissioner Willie. We also have two representatives for the City of Banks. Those are appointed by the City of Banks and then affirmed by your board. And then our two community representative positions that are appointed by your board. This table illustrates our current positions, and of course, two of them are expired. We have Commissioner Willie, Stacy Shetler, and then our two City of Banks reps, Marcia Kirk and Jolynn Becker, the mayor and city manager. And then Michael Borison, who served for us since 2011. So he had a nice, long run there. He decided not to reapply for a reappointment this time. And then Don Odermott, if you remember, we appointed him to a short term. And then he has reapplied for the full two-year term. For outreach, in addition to county media releases, we did advertise the vacant position through the county's weekly Community Engagement Connections e-update and the LUT News Weekly Newsletter. The City of Banks also advertised the vacant positions. And we did receive three applications for the two vacant community representative positions. One applicant ended up not living within the Northwest Act portion of Washington County, so was ineligible. And then Stacy and I interviewed the two remaining applicants. So with that, we have the two recommended applicants are Donald Odermott and Anthony Walters, who would be a new appointment. Mr. Odermott recently retired from municipal government and has extensive transportation policy knowledge. I know many of you are familiar with him. He currently works for a private firm specializing in multidisciplinary engineering and planning for transportation, land development, energy, and marine projects. And then Mr. Walters is actually from the City of Banks. He works in the transportation industry as operations manager for a highway-heavy hauling company. He also serves on the Banks Planning Commission and the Banks Parks, Recreation, and Tree Board. The staff's recommendation is that your board appoint Donald Odermott and Anthony Walters, the two vacant community representative positions on the Northwest Act to serve through December 2025.
I have a question, but it's not to the appointment recommendations, rather to the Northwest Act agenda process. Do the standard agendas include a portion for committee members to share any potential, potential conflict of interest?
I'll give that to Stacy. Stacy supports Commissioner Willie at these meetings. She's familiar with the agenda.
Yeah, I think that's usually self-identified. If there are conflicts of interest at the time and the specific topic that comes up, that's when it's done.
Well, given that these two good applicants are both working in the transportation arena, I think it would be useful for the standard agenda practice to follow other committees where there's just the set agenda item right at the beginning to allow committee members to declare any potential conflict of interest. To make it as easy for them as possible. That's all.
Thank you.
And it's just the standard line. I'm here. I work in the industry. As far as I can tell from all the packet materials, there isn't anything before us today that causes me any concern. Period. End of story. Move on. It it just helps make it easier for community members to participate in the whole plethora of activities where we would really benefit from their expertise and contributions. Other than that, I'm thumbs up.
I'm fine with both. I have a question unrelated. Is Walters related to Glenn Walters? Is that part of that family? You know, Jerry?
I don't know.
What did you say he's related to?
Oh, I just want to know if
Anthony Walters, if he was related to the
Not neck of the woods. Most people are related, yeah. With the same last name. So I just was curious. Yeah. But I'm fine with it. Yeah, great.
Thumbs up for me. All set. Okay, great. Thank you. When do you think this is coming back to us? In a week or two? It's usually two weeks.
Next week, on the fourth. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
That's okay. Great. Get him into service as quick as you can. Great. Now we're gonna have some fun with libraries because Lisa Tattersall always brings us good stuff. Yay, Lisa!
Good afternoon. Chair and Board of Commissioners, for the record, I'm Lisa Tattersall, Manager of Washington County Cooperative Library Services. And I'm here to, I'm here today to adjust my microphone and provide your board with an update on our funding and governance evaluation process. All right. So public library service in Washington County is provided by a partnership between the county, nine cities, and three nonprofit organizations, together known as the Cooperative. WCCLS is a department of the county, and we provide funding, core infrastructure, and support services to link 16 library buildings together into one county-wide system, which benefits all county residents. Library buildings are operated by our partner agencies, which are cities or nonprofits. And those partners provide staff, physical collections, programs, and services within their buildings. Public libraries in Washington County are a vital and well-used community asset. Libraries support students' success and lifelong learning. In addition to this traditional role, our county libraries provide essential broadband and technology access, connect community members to social services, and provide temperature-regulated spaces welcoming to all, which is a key component of climate resilience in our county. Your Board of County Commissioners is the governing board for the Cooperative. And then the WCCLS Executive Board is advisory to your board. The WCCLS Executive Board is composed of the executive administrative leadership from our city partners. So that's a city manager or an assistant city manager will attend, and then the executive leadership from our nonprofit partners. In fiscal year 2023-24, WCCLS is funded by a transfer from the county's general fund as well as revenue from a local option levy that expires June of 2026. Out of this combined revenue, WCCS provides library funding allocations for partner agencies as well as funding the core infrastructure and support services provided by WCCLS, including our heavily-used digital collection and broadband internet.
Can I just add while you're there? Do we have any idea what the studies contribute to the funding of libraries?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can follow up after. And then that also speaks to an upcoming deliverable in our process that I'm going to go over in a little bit, where we're actually going to find out the combined total cost of service.
That's, that's Thank you, Lisa.
Yep. Okay. So that was just a little bit of background and context. And now we're talking about the funding and governance process that we are going through together.
But if I could add, when we set off on this path of a few years ago, I think what numbers-wise we'd be interested in is not just the cumulative, but the cumulative, individual and cumulative when this current levy cycle started as well as currently.
Yeah, over time. Yeah.
Doesn't have to be every year. It's just when the current IGAs, so the current we put on the ballot in May of 2020, so it would have been for fiscal year
21, 22.
Yep, that one. And then
Yeah, okay.
Lisa, just to my knowledge, none of the buildings are owned by the Cooperative. They're all owned by the cities or the nonprofits as well as the collections?
Correct. Yeah, except for the West Loop Community Library, which is, we'll set that one aside for now. Yeah, the rest of the library buildings are either owned. So the cities all own their buildings. The nonprofit libraries in the urban unincorporated areas, they lease those spaces, but they are responsible for the lease and maintenance. And then they all own their physical collections that they have within those buildings. Okay. So there are two primary goals for this funding and governance evaluation process. And then each goal has a couple of outcomes attached to it. So the first goal is to improve service consistency and equity across the county. In order to do that, we will establish a common understanding of current service levels and total costs, establish base library service levels available for all county residents in the future, and evaluate and refine county and partner roles in providing that base level service to the community. The second goal is to support community needs by creating a library system with a fiscally sustainable future. In order to do that, we will identify options for funding those base-level library services and establish metrics to allocate funding for partners operating libraries. And this all sounds very government-y, and so I wanted to sort of just ground us in that all of this is in service to the community and that we are so fortunate to have such strong support for public libraries in Washington County from your board, from our city partners, from our nonprofit partners. The libraries are beloved and well-used by a broad cross-section of our community members. And we really want to ensure that this critical service is sustainable and evolves to continue to meet community needs for decades to come here in Washington County. So where we've been from the beginning of the process to this point, kind of review that. So Marina and Company is the consulting firm that is supporting this process and this work. They were selected through an RFP process that included three city representatives and one nonprofit library representative alongside county staff. The project scope was based on staff's work with your board in July of last year. And then the RFP process that we'd followed was based on that scope. The criteria for the RFP were developed in collaboration with our city and nonprofit partners, and then they also participated in scoring the proposals. Marina is a Washington County-based firm, which is a great coincidence. And they have a lot of experience working with similar inter-agency partnerships for shared service delivery, which is a unique thing. And so I really appreciated that about their experience. They've also done work for various departments here in the county. And we are pleased to be working with them as they are really data and process-driven. And they also understand the complexities of navigating this work with our wonderful and many city and nonprofit partners. So what comes next? The current local option levy and intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, with our city and nonprofit partners for library services and funding allocations expire June of 2026. The next levy cycle is from July of 26 through June 2031. And then staff have received your board's direction to target the November 2025 election for our next levy. This process is addressing sort of two time horizons. So one is a short-term funding and governance improvements, which will be reflected in the upcoming levy rate and renewed IGAs. And then we're also looking at longer-term recommendations for fiscal sustainability and governance, which extends beyond the horizon of the upcoming levy cycle. And we'll have a little more detail on that now. So this slide is a summary of the upcoming timeline on deliverables. We have a hard deadline of, should your board choose to put the levy on the ballot, November 2025, we have a hard deadline there that we're working towards. And so you'll see that the closer we are to the present, the more certain the dates are. But we are still moving along pretty aggressively to get this done. So I'll go through these briefly now. So on June 18, your board can expect a work session focused on the library and public safety levies, specifically around the milestones for work, for the work through to Election Day. In September, I'll be back to your board with a report on one of the major deliverables for this project, which is a current state assessment, including the current service levels across our system and the total cost to provide these current levels of service, including city, nonprofit, and county contributions. In November, your board is scheduled for another levy-specific work session for both the library and public safety levies. Then in January 2025, I'll be back with another major deliverable from this process, which is a report on recommended future baseline service levels across the system, what it would cost to provide those baseline service levels, and then three to five funding alternatives, including potential levy rates for your board to evaluate. In June of 2025, we arrive at another major deliverable, so we just keep up the pace here. And that will be a report recommending funding formula, criteria, and distribution methodology. This would be a recommendation on how to allocate county dollars for libraries to our city and nonprofit partners for service delivery. Currently, we're distributing about $28 million annually to those partners for library service. As we get closer to the levy, so looking at oh, I've lost track of where I am on this slide, September, we are anticipating a report outlining some governance improvements for the near term that would increase mutual accountability between the county and our city and city partners and nonprofit partners in how the funding is used and how services are delivered. Then after the levy election in November 2025, we'll be working on drafting updated IGA language with our partner agencies to capture those recommended governance improvements and memorialize the revised funding formula and distribution criteria. And then these IGAs would be in effect through June 2031. Then having met all of those hard deadlines and deliverables because of the levy timeline, we then transitioned the project to focus on those longer-term possibilities for sustainable funding and governments recommend, governance recommendations well past June 2031. And so Marina and Company will be working with the county, our partners, and community to develop those recommendations and also provide a roadmap to execute those. We anticipate those deliverables by October 2026, which is about two and a half years from now. What's also great, I think, is as they work on these short-term, short-to-medium-term deliverables, they're also building a deep base of a knowledge with which to inform those longer-term recommendations as well. They're really understanding our system. Okay. As I shared at the beginning, library service is delivered in partnership in our county. And so we all need each other to be able to provide library service in Washington County, and our community members benefit from this deep collaboration. And so it's important that as we go through this process that we have mutually agreeable solutions. Over the rest of this year, we have scheduled multiple in-person participatory work sessions with city managers, nonprofit library association executives, and library directors in order to get a mutually agreed-upon recommendation of base service levels for your board to consider. All of this work will be informed by the results of countywide community engagement that will be coming in July and August and informed by data and analysis done by Marina and Company. I also wanted to remind us of the decision-making framework that your board supported for this process at the work session in July of last year, based on the IAP, IAP2 model. And Marina and WCCLS continue to reference this framework in structuring our ongoing work with partners throughout the process. So as the governing board for our cooperative, your board will be making the final decisions on recommendations that will be supported by at least two-thirds of our city partners and at least two-thirds of our nonprofit partners. So for next steps, I'll return to you all in September with that current service levels assessment and total cost to deliver service. And then, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions and provide any other information you may need in the meantime. Thank you.
I'm a little confused because I pulled out the schedule from July of 2023, which was a whole chart. And now we don't have that chart with an update. Instead, we have this table. And so I'm trying to figure out which of those milestones moved.
Yeah.
And also, you now have near-term versus long-term that I didn't see covered last July. So could you explain to me what's happening now?
Yeah, well, what I can do is, first of all, I can take that slide from the last year's presentation and then repopulate it with this. I think we have, I think in July of last year, we didn't have a sense of when the levy was going to be on the ballot, but I could be wrong. And so I think as we've moved through that process and then working with sort of what the timelines are for when we need to get the levy on the ballot, we've adjusted some of the deliverable timeline. Also, I think in July, we hadn't had the contract in place yet. And so we also had to work with the consulting firm to get all of those deliverables.
What I can't tell is we, the goals are still the same.
Yes.
Okay. And I still believe in the evaluation of process. But what I can't tell is what of those goals will be achieved and incorporated into the next levy cycle versus the other one? It sounds like there's the potential that all of it's been kicked to the can till the 2030 timeframe. So so really, Lisa, what am I?
Let me zoom back.
What do you want me to count on? Right? Because you say, short-term, upcoming levy and IGAs. I'm like, okay, so that says none of this is going to get done for the next levy cycle because you've now said, long-term funding and governance beyond 2031. So
I'm gonna go back if, to this slide, if this works for a moment. And then if you're okay, what I'll do is just talk through which of these fit into our shorter time window and which of these fit into our longer time window.
So we, we gave thumbs up in July of last year, which did have two different opportunities for the levy, and we chose the later one.
November, yep.
Now, this is saying, we're going to split the project, if I understand it right, we're going to split the project up into a near-term and a long-term.
I think what we're trying to do is achieve these goals across continuum of time. So let me, I'm going to walk through these bullets and sort of talk it through. So for the first three bullets, those will all be addressed as part of the process as we lead up to this next levy in November. And then same for number, the fourth bullet, identify options for funding base-level library services. So that has sort of both
That one will stay
Yes.
In this, okay.
Yeah, because what we want to do is figure out, how do we fund those base-level library services with the current structure of levy? Right? Which is what we have, that, that short-term deadline coming up. But we also want to look on a longer time horizon. Are levies the only and best option for funding library service? What other mechanisms are there?
And so Yeah, and I agree with that.
Yeah. So we're answering that question kind of twice, in a way, like we're answering it in the short term for the levy that's coming up that we need to figure out. And we're also going to be looking at that question on a longer horizon, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the metrics, the last one, that's also in time for the levy because we need to have that updated funding formula to be able to just fill those funds.
I think I, I think what we want to make sure is that in the short term, we have a direct answer and a plan to move forward for both the levy and for our update to IGAs. The longer-term solutions are if through the process, different, different alternatives that require more time are identified, that we're also sort of having that plan for that just in case. But in terms of the meeting, the, the goals
That could land one, there are new, new things we need to investigate or we need more time, so we're just going to kick the can to another cycle. And that's the one.
That's why we're really excited about our partner and about our partners in this process because I think everyone is really focused in on both the immediate. And I think folks don't want to let perfection get in the way of progress and that task at hand. And so we're really trying to, in the in our, in our sort of partner meetings, be really clear about the need to hit our goals in the short term and that there's some immediacy there.
So I'm not going to be thumbs up with this today. Okay? Because some of what this presentation just enumerates is stuff we already know, the levy cycles. But we knew that then, still looking at last year's, okay? So you're making me figure out, if I wanted to give thumbs up today, what the difference is. And it's, it's not clear, and I think it should.
I wasn't sure you were asking thumbs up in terms of your next step. I think you were just sharing information with us. Were you requesting a thumbs up from us? Because I didn't see that anywhere in the materials.
Yeah, so the purpose of today was to provide a brief update. But it seems like we need to give you more information and to get, get you a little bit more meat on the bone in terms of information about what that, and to give you greater clarity. From what I'm hearing, your questions and from what I know about the process, I have a high degree of confidence that we'll get to those goals in the near term. I think there was some lost in translation in trying to leave that opening in case there's, you know, something else that comes up. And so we can, we can illuminate that a little bit and make that more clear for you.
And I think for me, it's the I understand the project around cost allocation, just what the costing is and all that. And then there's the levy and where that Venn diagram comes together as well, trying to figure out. But I true?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. But it also is confusing about what, what does go through.
Oh, I apologize. I'm Danny, I'm the ACA. Thank you. Absolutely. We do want to make sure that we're, we're really focused on sustainability and funding in the near term and wanting to make sure that we're realistic, given our county's budget and the budget outlook moving forward. And at the same time, you know, seeking to mine all the creativity and good, good recommendations that come out of a process like this.
My comments would be these. About not that many months ago, maybe a few months back, I had mentioned to this board that before I get out of here, I'd hoped that we would define at least the first couple of bullets, if not getting into that third bullet. So short-term to me means between now and December 31, roughly. If, short-term to you is in the next year, I'll let my successor handle that. But I had hoped that we would have some understanding of what costing is because costing to me is very different, just allocating costs. It's full costing. And that's what the county has found itself in a very difficult position on in regard to delivering services. We don't always enter all of our costs that we need to, to make things sustainable. So help me to understand, is this something that I'm going to worry about? Or is good Jason I see sitting back there, is he going to have to deal with it in 2025? Are we, as a board who started this process in '23, oh, said we would come up with something. And I thought picking on you, just a little bit on your comments, because you were, you were right when we were talking. And that's, you know, I talked about it a few months ago, that we would come to some conclusion rapidly, not about the governance issue because we knew that was out in the future, but at least on the funding and the full costing funding.
Yeah, so the idea is that goal one, that sort of establishing a common, a common understanding of the current service levels, that your board would have that information by the September board update, that we would have both a fiscal and a understanding of what those services are. Then in January, and I think that's where you saw a little bit of a drift. So we're going to have to, again, be elegant with the, the budget timeline. But the hope is that by January of 2025 is when those recommendations about the future state, which would include both governance and funding, your board would have that slate of recommendations and also some, some time over the winter to, to see that beforehand.
Got a foot in both worlds. Okay. Got a foot in both worlds, okay, go ahead.
So there, so there.
To do this from looking at this latest process and the old one, it looks like things shifted out a year.
It did, in my mind, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. We always trying to get things done more rapidly and deal with the whole governance issue out there, and trying to deal with costing upfront, but, okay.
Yeah, so I think the um, the idea is, is that we wanted to make sure that this, uh that the, the funding recommendations coincided not only with the levy timeline, but also with the county budget process, given that we'd have to contend with both.
And the levy is May of twenty-five you're thinking of?
January of twenty twenty-five would be when you would have this, the future state recommendations. Uh, when, when the board would have uh the future state recommendations, that is the analysis of the current state and what would be needed.
November.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
So then November, by, so there would be, you know, uh, and we heard on my second day at the county uh from this body that there was much more um sort of lead time that we would need before a levy, uh which would be in November, so the idea is that by January of twenty twenty-five, you'd have the eleven months um of leadway with recommendations, but then the, the two to three months for the county budget process as well.
Just, let me ask one more question. What, the, the levy expires, as I recall, in twenty-five, right?
June of twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah. So if something doesn't pass in November of twenty-five, then what? You're gonna wildly run for may, you'll run wildly and hopefully grab something. So you're giving yourself not a lot of time, okay? Yeah. It's true.
So we will come back to this body with some, uh, with that sort of detail, so that you can see and have greater confidence in the sort of what was proposed earlier, and you can see the side by side. And we can get that to you shortly.
I, I do have a one last. Your last bullet point in terms of the next steps slide, said what information needs does your board have in the meantime? Uh, as a one member, I really like the slide that you put together, and this is something that I've heard from constituents as well. But I wonder, if it's not too much time, I haven't the dates, but if we could identify the historical dates of each library, and not the buildings, but the actual library, when it was actually created or founded.
We can pull that together for you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is board and leadership communication and formal agenda item discussion. Why don't we take the easy one first? The formal agenda. So um, board members, today's meeting, we've got the consent agenda, one appointment set for boards and commissions, yet again, another proclamation for the month of May. I don't think we've had a meeting without at least one this month of May, and then that's it. Does anyone have any questions or needs on anything on the formal agenda? Okay, great, so that takes us back to board and leadership communication. Who wants to go first?
I, I can go, I'll be quick. Uh, last week, as your board member representative, we had JPAC, uh, there was not um significant um decision-making happening at JPAC, but we did however discuss the, the RFA program direction and just wanted to just bubble up uh two recommendations the staff are entertaining uh when we get to the RFA program direction. Uh, the staff are thinking that we probably gonna recommend prioritizing funding for a combination of one eighty-fifth Avenue Max Overcrossing, and as well as funding for TV Highway Safety Improvement. Uh, the question we posed to Metro and the Metro staff and JPAC was, would one eighty-fifth Avenue Max Crossing Project meet the proposed themes for uh bonding funding? And then the other um
you're asking, wait, can you, so you're saying Washington County staff is recommending we move forward with those two Washington County projects?
When we get to the funding, but we will come back to the board for decision-making and involvement. But right now, uh, we're posing the question to see if one eighty-fifth Avenue Max Crossing Project meets the proposed theme for, for the misstep RFFA, or RFA, uh, for Metro's bonding.
For Metro's bonding.
For Metro's bonding, sorry, JPAC, I assumed everybody is on, yeah, so Metro. Considering bonding uh RFA funds to implement a regional or corridor scale projects to advance uh RTP, so that's what I was talking about. Now, the second bullet point uh that I wanted to raise your awareness is that we posed um last RFA cycle. It was a, the Fano Creek project was underfunded, and we asked Metro staff to consider fully funding that project, five hundred thousand dollars. And it's most likely gonna happen, and so I just wanted to raise some good things that are moving forward in that area. What'd you say, Roy?
Say another million, well, he's still with it, that Fano Creek project, big project.
Well, the.
I'm not saying that, you can get it.
How much is in the, this MTP RFFA funding cycle? So um good questions. So the second one is the redistribution of funds allocated proposal, and that is thirteen point six million to allocate, and Met- Metro proposal is to allocate ten million to address inflationary impacts. So what we're really talking about, the five hundred thousand dollar is taking out the thirteen point six million dollars. Yeah, a lot of money, thirteen point six.
Well, over cycles, they've advanced different corridors, right?
Yeah.
And so, plus, they use MTP funds to pay the JPAC dues.
That's where it's coming.
With cost escalation, right? So it means there's more taken off the top, so there's less for RFA projects. So that, that's what I'm trying to suss out for this RFA cycle. How many, how much money is dedicated for the projects? Is that the thirteen point six?
That's the redistribution, the bonding amount has not been decided, there's not been a.
So redistribution is redistributing from the last allocation that didn't happen.
Yeah, and then the other one, the two other projects that I mentioned, one eighty-fifth Avenue Max Crossing and the TV Highway is completely bonding. So, and that one, there's no amount yet. They're still in the process, because this is the first time they're gonna bond the RFA. Yeah, yeah.
That's why I wasn't sure what you were talking about with bonding.
Yeah, you're like, what is happening at Metro? Yeah, it's a new thing.
Okay, well, maybe in the future, something written down will come to us. As far as you know, what kind of deadline are you working towards for JPAC?
I don't think there's any deadline, I think we have to make a decision next November.
November of twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four. So that's the decision of approving the RFA projects. But in terms of when we're gonna decide the bonding.
Well, so you'll have to work with staff to figure out when to put this on the ruling agenda.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
I can go next. Thanks for letting me go second. Um, I was gonna have. Last week was the lovely uh IMPAC meeting, and uh it was it's, it's an interesting job to be, to be chairing the meetings and trying to coordinate everything and make sure we're getting through the meeting on time. We had to drop off one presentation because uh of, of a time constraint, so you know, it's, it's, it's an interesting process for me to experience, but uh there are two things that I wanna call to your attention. Number one was the fact that um Sherwood brought forward their concept plan, and I wanted to make sure in the process that they had enough time to go through their concept plan, and we really got right down to the wire on that. Uh, but there was some discussion previ- previous to the IMPAC meeting about whether or not different views should be on the agenda for IMPAC and his chair, and it involved, obviously, in the coordinating uh meetings, I said, no, that we don't, that's not part of this process, and they can certainly come and provide testimony prior to the, the presentation, and that's in fact what happened, we had five presentations that were all in opposition to the Sherwood Concept Plan, but even the, the purpose in the, in Sherwood presenting this plan is for awareness, for impact, and for education for all the different participants, so we're not at a decision point on the concept plan, but it fits into the larger larger piece when we're looking at urban growth expansion, so, and that's gonna be on our on our menu for this year, so that's why it's important, but I really wanted to make sure that we were consistent with the process that has been established by Metro for going, walking down this road. And the, the the testimony was largely from um a thousand friends, so, but, and I'm also meeting with Councilor Nolan uh separately, just to talk about this, because she might have different views than, than we have about that, the process here.
So she's one of two council reps at IMPAC, is that right?
You know, oftentimes, we'll have three, or like.
But only two are at the table.
Yes, yes.
So who are the?
Councilor Nolan and uh Councilor Rosenthal.
Yep.
So, and Councilor Rosenthal did the, the update. The other piece that I wanted to shed a light on is that at, at my request, as chair, I've asked for uh monthly updates on the process that Metro is going through with the um Affordable Housing Bond and SHS Bond, and so Marissa Madrigal makes that presentation. She did, it was a long presentation this time, it was probably fifteen minutes, just presentation time, and there were, there are questions it posed after that, but I had encouraged our staff to follow that as well, and um it, it's, you know, it's an interesting process, there's she talked about the county continuing to be involved, not the county staff involved, so so there's a lot of, a lot of um positioning on this issue, that's the word. So it was, it was, it was an interesting meeting and an active meeting, and we had which was a good thing, because we finally got our, the MTAC nominations approved in a backlog of uh minutes, so that, that was good. Uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna be taking a tour of the Opel with Congresswoman Bonamici, she missed the grand opening, so I'm gonna be going on a, a small tour with her to, to either see what, what's going on there and just how proud we are of the, of the work that's been done there, both by our staff and our partners in the community. Uh, and then I will be attending the uh ceremony with Congresswoman Bonamici at the Cedar Hills Rec Center, and I believe Chair is gonna be.
Oh, yeah, Turpinning.
Yes, so that's, that's a good, a very good thing, and then next week, I am uh going to be attending the swearing in over at the Sheriff's Office on Monday the third. So, that's my report.
Great, thank you.
Good, okay, um, last week, uh, we had Salmonberry Trail Foundation Board Meeting, where we uh continued to have conversations about uh funding and some of the other projects, or some of the other uh issues that we're dealing with, some different on the coast than here, so um it's, but those are always good conversations. Catherine and I went to the Explorer Tualton Valley Reception fortieth Anniversary together, that was, actually, we didn't go together, but
We were both there.
We were both there, and uh that was a good, good event, it's, um, that's their fortieth anniversary, so um, so yeah, it was good to hear things um and an update from them. Uh, Thursday morning was the WEA Mayor's Meeting, and uh I believe all of us went to that as well. Um, it, the best part about, well, it wasn't the best, but it was good to see, we had three representatives from our Sheriff's Department there. Uh, in uniform, and so um, it's always good to have them out and about and visible. Friday, the high point of my week was I got to read The Little Engine That Could uh to a uh group of mayors, oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's, I blended that up uh to a group of kindergarteners and first graders. That was the.
I missed that joke.
That was a.
No, you didn't.
Uh, anyway, no, this was at the Hillsborough Online Academy, so it was all online, and it was great, the kids really interacted really well, and it's fun to do that kinda stuff. Uh, had, we had a Forest Trust Lands um meeting on Friday, and uh we continued to kinda struggle with um the uh, the relationship of the forest management plan, the habitat conservation plan, the implementation plan, the operational plan, and then performance measures on all that, so we continue to have those conversations with the Oregon Department of Forestry and the Board of Forestry, all of which were there and, and presented. Uh, then had a, a COPEC executive session, we continued to talk about things like broadband and uh priorities for COPEC. We had um let's see, the R-one Act is coming up on Monday, so I will not be able to attend the acre, and I think Maida has already communicated that to everybody, and then um this Friday morning is an all-day meeting with the Salmonberry Trail and a governmental agency, where we will be talking about their responsibility, and uh their IGA is coming up in a year for, uh, it expires in a year, so it's gonna be important that we figure out how we're gonna renew that, so that's it.
I would've thought the highlight of your week last week was when Mayor Callaway at the WEA event said that we all stand on the shoulders of those that came before us, and I agree to that. And then he specifically called you out and said, what a terrific job you did as.
I know, he's always kissing up on that, you know, just gotta watch him.
Very interesting, anyway.
We can get involved in that.
So I appreciate Mayor Callaway saying that, but he's, he's very gracious.
Tomorrow, uh, both the chair and I have a meeting on the Clean Water Insurance Company. Biggest issues over there, so that, oh, is always in terms of what you insure and how much you insured for. Kinda like your CPI, that, that CPI that we did, CIP, there we go, that we did, you have to take a look at what your exposure and risk are. Uh, cyber insurance is always a huge one that we need to take a look at. Uh, earthquake insurance is always another one, the reason that Clean Water Service has the reserves that they have is because they don't have it fully funded to do all of the improvements to the catastrophe, so it's always interesting to take a look at those risks and determine what one needs to do. Um, night after that, I have a meeting with the Audit Committee, which ought to be interesting, uh, but the chair was doing that last year, I did it for a number of years, and then she did it, and I'm back at it, but bigger issues to me there are, again, my famous issue in regard to the uh component unit issues of Gatsby sixty-one, and I still take an exception to what the auditors are doing, I'm gonna chat with them a little bit, and I'll get a whole the audit partner who I've known for a long time, and say, I don't agree with your position. Uh, it's more of a related party, and that's, it's, all I can tell you without getting into all technicalities, not good to be component units for clean water, it's not good for the county to be a component unit. So we'll, we'll deal with that, and in addition to that, any of the new pronouncements, Sabitas and all the rest of the stuff, the Gatsby one hundred just came out, and I don't know what their adjustments passed are, but I'll ask them all the obligatory auditor kinda questions and make certain we're all so, that sounds like a foreign language, and sort of is, but uh, that's, that's the world I live in, so. that sounds like a foreign language and sort of is, but that's, that's the world I live in, so I'm sorry. So that's a couple of nights. Go to the Chair.
Alrighty, well, thank you to the few of you who mentioned the other fun activities that we had last week and have to look forward to over the next couple of weeks out and about in our community. Commissioner Willie let me know that he won't be able to attend the local Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting and as usual, I will be at that. So we'll have at least a commissioner in the room. I can't quite figure out, maybe you can, Commissioner Tree's AOC meetings this month. It's, it's a little different than usual. So some I can make and some I can't, so.
And I'm working on my schedule since I'll be gone in June for two weeks.
Yeah.
I want to, there's some, I won't be at the legislative meeting, for example, so.
Okay.
I will be reporting out what I'll be attending and not next week.
Okay, well, and maybe Meta can help me figure out coverage there. But I hope, I'm not ready for the month of June yet. But I will wake up on Saturday and realize it's here whether I'm ready for it or not. But I want to make sure that you all have noted on your calendar Friday, June seventh for the Beaverton Cat Building. And then we have our roundtable on Monday, the tenth. So for me, I have a bunch of attention energy going into preparing for the State of the County Address on June twentieth, which is a Thursday, the day after the Wednesday holiday of June twelfth. June's, June's an unusual month, so, yeah. That's about it for me, so, yeah. Welcome, Jason.
Yes, hello. So, leadership.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Board, Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. I have just two quick updates. One, you know very well, but Ms. Angie is traveling as part of her ICMA duties over the next couple of weeks, so I will be filling in this week and Erin will take over next week. And just a reminder that if you have any needs, questions, you're, you know, reach out to us, email, call, text. We're here for you and we'll all welcome Tanya back on June tenth.
And towards that end, please note, she sent us a couple of different informational pieces on Thursday and Friday. But the one on Thursday included the latest ACA portfolio, so it's really useful. You know, I've, I really appreciate having it.
And then the other is a civics leader update. So this evening, a group of participants from our city civic leaders project will practice testifying at the board meeting. So at five o'clock, they'll practice with Chair Harrington before the official meeting starts. And then some of the participants are, are planning to stay and address the board during public comment during the actual meeting tonight. So as, as I'm sure that you all remember the civics, I can't say that word today for something. The civics leader project is led by our partner Adelante Mujeres. And it involves supporting communities of color and other underrepresented communities to complete hands-on leadership training, equipping them to actively participate in civic life the county and to engage in county decision-making. So one of, one of your, one request of the board tonight is if you wouldn't mind after the pu- public comment area, they would really like a picture with you, so if you wouldn't mind coming down and taking a quick picture with the civics leader, that's one of the requests.
After the first one or the second one?
I believe after the first one, if they're planning to do the two-minute, is my understanding.
Well, we will have to fit in, we do have a couple of other people who have testified for the first session, so, and we usually limit the whole thing to ten minutes. So it means just a few of them will probably have the opportunity to speak.
Right. And, and that's my understanding is that just a few of them are planning to talk tonight. But we'll make sure they understand the two-minute.
Okay.
We could also take a picture before we even get started, if they're, be there with you ahead of time, if that makes it more convenient.
Five minutes early, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So would you prefer that for that five minutes early?
I always still want them to, to have the opportunity to testify, so.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking it'd be better than confusing the people that testify that aren't part of civic leader training. I just want to make sure I have
You have to eat my dinner.
Not during the picture.
That's all.
It's, it's, it's up to your preference.
Siding officers?
Yeah, we can do it. Would you rather do it before the meeting then?
Well, we'll have to ask them.
Okay.
See when they're all, all there.
Philip and I can help coordinate that if you need to, just reach out. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, Courtney.
Hello, Chair, how are you?
Good.
Um, I actually, it's been a bit of a whirlwind and with the holiday and staff in and out and doing some coverage. So I actually don't have a formal report for you this week, but rest assured, good work continues upstairs and we'll be communicating with you as appropriate going forward.
Great, thank you, yep. And we'll get the hot sheet too, so, yep, it's all good, thank you. Hello, Diane.
Hi, good afternoon and thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon to the Board of Clean Water Services. It's with a heavy heart that I would like to let the board know about the passing of two very important community members that have had a really significant positive impact to Clean Water Services. We're going to circulate cards for the board to sign and to send to the families. The first person is Art Lawrence, I don't know if many of you know him. He served on the Clean Water Advisory Committee and he was really central to the district's Pure Water Brew Initiative to advance the understanding of the value of our reused water. So that modern tech, water technology exists that we can treat the water so that it's fit for you. So it can be returned to the river or it can be used for irrigation water and there's actual technology that exists that we can turn it into high purity water for consumption. So Art Lawrence is the pioneer in Oregon's craft brew industry. He was instrumental in connecting Clean Water Services to the Oregon Brew Crew and this legacy lives on about what Clean Water Services did. When the Water Caucus came to visit us just recently, they really wanted to taste some pure water brew and we, we don't have any more of that and they were a little disappointed, but it really started this wave of innovation within the industry as a whole. So places as far as Singapore now have their own pure water brew to California and Arizona, but Art was really instrumental in that.
Do we start the pure water wagon?
We still have the wagon, yeah.
And I mentioned that Art's brother Steve was on this board for at least two terms in District One.
Yeah, just a great family. And the second is the passing of Roger Madsen. So Roger Madsen had continued to reside at the home of our Tuolton River Farm that was in partnership with Clean Water Services since twenty twelve, when we acquired the property from Metro. And the Madsens had established a perpetual conservation easement with Metro to ensure long-term stewardship of their land and that then was transferred to Clean Water Services. Both Gale and Roger, the long pillars of the Hillsborough community. And Roger's kindness and his love of nature will definitely be missed deeply by all who knew him. And the Tuolton River Farm is really a special place, I know the board got to Tourette's. It provides us with the critical infrastructure needed for our natural systems enhancement and stewardship staff to manage our plant material program and to cost effectively provide millions of plants for enhancement within the watershed so that we can have compliance with our thermal requirements as well as to provide a healthy watershed. And just this spring, turf was served as the research site for Pacific University's plant pathology students. And they were conducting a semester-long investigation of phytoflora, so that's a genus of a plant damaging mold. So really Roger and Gale's legacy is going to continue on forever in this watershed, but it's for the heavy heart that we've lost to these important community members.
But they've each, as I understand it, have had long, long-lived lives.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think Art was eighty, I think it was in the news, and Roger Madsen was ninety-six, I want to say. Yeah, long, amazing lives and that really made a difference. But we'll send the cards and, and send it to their families. The team is real busy with the end of the year budget thing, so we're getting ready for June actions with the board, but thank you.
Eighteenth, big day.
Is Gale still living?
Right now, she's still living at the farm, so we'll find out.
She had a great sense of humor.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be long, I think.
I guess one, one thing that I've also learned here is I didn't realize that the Tuolton River Farm was doing the, the plant propagation the way that you described, I was familiar with the Metro Native Plant Center. And they're doing work there.
So they have beds out there, so we do both sort of cuttings and our own plant propagation and buying of plants from nurseries, so.
I thought we primarily bought the, the materials.
Yeah, it's the cuttings, we like getting, harvesting the cuttings
Okay.
from the property, yeah.
I know we've had some beds, but I didn't think it was extensive.
Okay, cool, you learn something new every day.
Great, thank you.
Another question for you, Dan, the other day, the other night, I watched a movie on a lawsuit against DuPont and it was about PFOS.
Yes, Dark Waters.
Yeah, Dark Waters, that was, that was a very interesting movie. Was, was that, I mean, was, how much was that, was factual?
A lot of it, yes, it was made for the movie, but the issues
Remember, we were talking about that a couple of years ago when it was coming out?
I can't remember yesterday.
Yeah, we did a showing, I think, for people
Yeah, it was just on Netflix.
And, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was interesting, so I tried to explain that to Judy and, you know, of course it had to be in pretty much late terms to come from me, but anyway, it was, it was interesting that I could make that connectivity.
And now the EPA has new standards that we have to operate under.
It's impacting drinking water considerably, considerably across the US. He was ninety-three, Roger Madsen.
Oh, great. Chair, Chair Harrington, if I may, Amanda checked in and she says if your board would like the five minutes before the board meeting starts would work for the civic leaders.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll let them in.
Thank you. How about that, we'll just do that right before we call the meeting to order? In the auditorium, yeah, that'd be great.
Cool, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okey-dokey, anything else? Alrighty, well, we're adjourned and we'll see one another at six thirty, thank you.